We will now move on. Okay, Urbana City Council. First, let me call it to order and would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Barnes.
Here.
Bowersox.
Here.
Chenoweth.
Present.
Lewis.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Smythe.
Here.
Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Here. Approval of minutes of the previous meeting, that would be April 7th.
I second that.
Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Roberts. Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make one.
Okay.
I realize this might be a little bit spontaneous, but I would like to make a resolution to honor Roger Ebert and to commemorate his boyhood home, Urbana, as a part of the 175-year celebration to honor an important citizen within our community who's about to start a very important film festival.
Okay, to add this to the agenda, we need a two-thirds vote. I suppose we could just all -- how many are in favor? Just raise your hands. Anyone opposed? Okay, it's on the agenda. Now, petitions and communications, is there anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council? No one would like to address? Well, I do have two people, David Dehaven, but he had to leave. He's in favor of the stream names. And did you want to speak now, Clark Bullard?
Thank you. My name is Clark Bullard, 509 West Washington, Urbana. Dr. Layton and I were here last week and got our two minutes at 11:15, but I wanted to add just a couple of things. Ironically, Dr. Layton couldn't come tonight because he's in San Antonio, probably dining alongside the San Antonio River. But I just wanted to emphasize that this is about naming streams, returning to names that are more consistent with the way they were named for natural features of the landscape, the westernmost tributary of the Salt Fork, and the upper Salt Fork as being the tributary that extends the farthest upstream. Before the drainage districts came along, that was the typical way of naming streams, and they've had six or seven names over the years. But drainage ditch, in our opinion, overemphasizes one of the many, many uses and many services like water quality and recreation and fish and wildlife that streams provide to our community, and they affect the image of our community. And recently, in talking to some people who live in the northeast Urbana area, I've been told that they don't like being -- when they give directions to their home, saying, "Cross the ditch," and then turn right or left. Bottom line is, I think, this isn't about the extent to which a stream has been modified to enhance drainage. I've heard that question. The segment of the Salt Fork where these tributaries flow into has been straightened substantially, probably more severely, altered more severely for drainage than the two tributaries we're talking about here. And the same goes for the Mississippi and Cascasquia and Illinois rivers, which were altered to facilitate navigation. But they still serve lots of uses. So the issue here is, if you call it a ditch, people will tend to treat it like a ditch. And ditch means to get rid of something, throw it away, and that's certainly what's happened in some of these streams. But calling it a stream, I think, encourages people to respect all of the functions that it serves. And it affects, in a subtle way, the expectations of those who discharge into a stream, whether they're agricultural dischargers, rural dischargers, or urban dischargers like you, the city of Urbana with your storm sewers, and the university with its power plant and ammonia cleaning fluids. But just raising the consciousness a little bit, recognizing that it's a multipurpose stream and naming it accordingly, I think, is a step in the right direction. So if you're happy to answer any questions?
Dennis Roberts.
Okay, I'm going to be asking this from memory. I know I looked at the maps a week or two ago when I was first, you know, looking at this project. Isn't it true that the Salt Fork flows into the Vermillion near the Indiana boundaries?
Actually, it's near Danville.
In near Danville.
The Middle Fork comes in, and then the North Fork.
And does the canoe rental services and the recreational facilities at the Kikapu Landing and Kikapu State Park, part of that water source?
They are along the Middle Fork.
The Middle Fork?
Right.
Which also drains into the Vermillion River, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's an important recreational area of the state. So it would make sense to me to treat the upper tributaries of these sections of the Vermillion River with more honor and respect, and to consider them as streams rather than ditches. So I'm in favor of your proposal.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the City Council? Okay, I don't believe we have any old business. Reports of standing committees, committee of the whole.
This is an ordinance establishing a public arts commission and permanent public arts program. Charlie.
Are you going to make a motion?
Oh, for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay.
Good.
So it's been seconded by Charlie. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, there's a couple of typos I'd like to add. Not add, correct.
How generous.
The first paragraph, I believe we should have an "and" after the semicolon. And in the second paragraph, I believe we should delete the word "that," which is just before the semicolon. Is that okay?
Couple more corrections.
So do you have other corrections?
Well, yeah, a couple of pieces of the motion didn't make it over from last week.
Okay, because we really tried.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. So if you turn to the duties section, but flip the page, so it's, let's see, page one, two. Page four, on page four, in roles and responsibilities, number one, there's a space missing after the comma. That's just a typo.
There's a space missing after the comma.
Heritage, comma, space, as well as.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, and then, from last week, item number six got -- there was a -- we stuck in a new item six.
That was really unclear. I got the list from the clerk's office.
Right, yeah.
It just had a phrase, and it didn't seem to make any sense. So what would you -- what were you saying?
Number six was to approve selected proposals. Just like, number five says to convene temporary selection committees, number six was to approve selected proposals.
To approve selected proposals?
That was the wording from the previous week.
Okay, but is that different from what number six is? Because number six sort of gets into the same process.
To submit recommendations.
Public arts council.
Yeah, right.
Number six just refers to the ones that are permanently placed on property.
Okay, well, there was a word change in the new number seven. Well, you know, that's how -- that was, I remember taking the old, Danielle's number five from before had the two approved selected proposals in there, and we asked the rest, but kept that piece of it. And the current number seven, number six, which becomes number seven, and changing the numbers, continuing on, it was, at the end of that, was mayor and city council to confirm the receipt purchase maintenance disposition, dispossession, and deaccession of works of art. It wasn't regarding the receipt, it was to confirm. You know, regarding the receipt doesn't make any sense.
True.
To confirm, yeah. So to confirm goes.
Okay, so what's it supposed to say? To submit recommendations and proposals to the mayor and city council.
Mayor and city council to confirm the receipt.
To confirm.
Now that I look at this, I'm not, I'm having trouble figuring out where the two approved selected proposals works in relation to the new number seven here.
Yeah, that's where we had a problem, too.
Probably to get at what we want, we could add another number here and say, "To approve proposals which are not from a replacement."
That would clarify.
Yeah, that would, yeah, okay, that makes more sense, yeah.
Can you just say it again?
So we would insert a number, like number six, then renumber the rest, and then say "to approve..."
These are of certain nature.
"...proposals."
Yeah, that's.
Or, yeah, to approve proposals that are not permanently placed on municipal property.
That's good, yes, yeah. That's what it was meant to be, right. We took too much out of context.
Yes.
And then renumber the rest would be 7819.
Since that's a little bit different from what we sent, I would propose this number six as an amendment. I'd move this as an amendment to the original.
Are you going to include the other items, too?
The other changes, yeah, I might as well.
Yeah.
All the changes, we'll just move it as an amendment so that it's a nice, clean record.
Okay, there's an amendment by Charlie. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Lynn. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thanks, Lynn.
Okay, now, back to the original motion. That was a motion by Heather, seconded by Charlie. Is there any further discussion?
I have just a question. Danielle, on here, I'm seeing this $750,000 number on the municipal building projects, but where is the $3 not in here any longer?
No.
Just to keep the budget stuff out.
Okay, so there's not a?
No.
There's not an obligated funding.
Can I respond to that question, because it's meaningful?
Chair.
Yes, thank you. It's, the thought was that some ordinances put in dollar figures and some don't, Aurora put in a dollar figure, a lot of ordinances don't. It, an ordinance is something that stays steady in time, and it didn't make sense necessarily to have a dollar figure. It was in the whereas, as actually, it wasn't in the actual ordinance that was creating legislation. That said, it is, the council did pass goals to say that we supported a dedicated revenue stream for the arts. And so, as we move forward with an annual plan, and we look at what we consider to be an appropriate funding allocation, we'll have to revisit the issue of appropriate funding. The, what came from, as staff recommendation, was $3 per capita, and what came from the task force recommendation was a $4 per capita. And a per capita allocation is a kind of typical way of establishing a dedicated revenue stream for the arts. So that's kind of the history behind it.
Any other discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Barnes.
Yes.
Bowersox.
Yes.
Chenoweth.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Smythe.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Ms. Stevenson.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations to Urbana, it's the one that gets the benefit.
Resolution number 2008-04-008R for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2008-04-009R for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Ordinance number 2008-04-027 for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a question on that.
Sure, go ahead.
I don't know, yeah, Bill's over here. One of the things that I wonder about, I know we've got a parking study coming for downtown, wondering when we're going to see that, and I also was wondering, you know, what's the feasibility of putting a couple of short-term meters on the street near this business, on Springfield? I know this addresses parking on Birch, but I wonder about some short-term meters on, in front of the business, like we do at Bike Works and a couple other places in town.
The status of the downtown parking study is the project manager became ill and is not able to continue on the project, so the project, the consultant owner is stepping in in his absence. So in this transition, we're waiting on him completing the first assessments, if you will, and going through all the data that's been collected and that sort of thing. I don't have a timeframe on when that will be, but we had this unfortunate illness that has caused a delay. With respect to meters on Springfield, I would just say that we just need to take that to the traffic commission to evaluate such a thing, and look at the pros and cons and the recommendation made. Anytime we add meters, you know, it takes an ordinance to do, so.
I guess the reason I brought it up was, I would have thought that was considered, maybe, and Dennis might be able to speak to it, but I would think that any meters that we did on Springfield would be taken, we wouldn't want to do meters now without the whole parking study in front of us. So, I mean, that's why I asked it with respect to the parking study.
I, yeah, I'm not sure if the studying limits went, you know, west of Birch Street, I'm just not sure. It may be close to the, beyond the boundary area, but again, I'm not sure what was discussed at traffic commission as far as a recommendation to that.
I could speak to that slightly from memory, as I recall. First of all, I don't think that the parking study actually hits Birch Street, or if it is, it must be at the very edge of it. I don't think it goes that far. Secondly, that's a defined area. I mean, certainly there are concerns. And secondly, we did actually discuss a little bit about meters versus limited parking by signage, and also on the north side of the street, and that might come in the future, but Joe Smith sort of advised against going that direction at this time. He would like to see further information before he advised metering that location. So it might be a future discussion.
I guess I'll be disappointed if Springfield wasn't included in the downtown study.
I just don't know how far down, I don't think it goes that far.
Yeah, because I know there's a lot of commuter, a lot of residential parking, a lot of commuter parking there, where I see people park their car and then hop on a bus. So, and as business interests downtown, you know, as businesses expand downtown, I'd prefer to see the parking there for the businesses and the patrons as opposed to commuters.
Brandon Bowersox.
Yeah, is there a way we can just ask Joe to put this on the agenda, maybe for the next usual meeting, and for him, you said maybe there was some other information he wanted to see before he could think about whether or not to recommend any of these meters? If we could just ask that, you know, that you all talk through that, if you have some more information this next time, because I think it's worthy cause and would help.
Maybe it could be addressed specifically during traffic commission, and we could have a recommendation. Okay.
Mr. Smythe.
I really think we need to have the parking study in front of us. Even if it doesn't come to there, I think we want to see the parking study and then talk about any additional area we want to include.
Any other discussion? Okay, this is ordinance number 2008, an ordinance amending Schedule N of Section 23-193 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, limiting parking time on certain streets or public parking lots. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Barnes.
Yes.
Bowersox.
Yes.
Chenoweth.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Smythe.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
On that, motion carries. Ms. Stevenson.
Ordinance number 2008-04-026, and this is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for public works for the snow removal over time for the committee, I so move.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Barnes.
Yes.
Bowersox.
Yes.
Chenoweth.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Smythe.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Pressing.
Yes, that motion carries. Ms. Stevenson.
Ordinance number 2008-04-025, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement. This is 3010, East Windsor Road, Illinois Power Substation for the committee, I so move.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mayor, is this one that you vote on for the annexation agreements? Or is it just the petitions?
Just vote on, I just would, my recommendation would be just to have her vote, so we know we're clean.
Council members Barnes.
Yes.
Bowersox.
Yes.
Chenoweth.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Smythe.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Pressing.
Yes, that motion carries. Stevenson.
Ordinance number 2008-04-028, an ordinance approving the City of Urbana and Urbana-Champaign, Champaign County Home Consortium fiscal year 2008-2009 Annual Action Plan for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any, oh, Ms. Chenoweth.
Yeah, I just had, we weren't able to have discussion on this because of the lateness of the hour last week, so I just have two questions for whomever would be the person answering, maybe Libby. Okay, it has to do with Kerr Avenue and Ecolab. So just one of the things that the city has focused on in the last several years is sustainable design, and it's really exciting to see that we're moving forward with sustainable design, both with a affordable housing neighborhood on Kerr Avenue that would have, that reduces energy consumption and uses sustainable design in building construction. We also fund Ecolab, which builds passive solar homes in town. So I guess my question is, I read the document, but I don't necessarily have a sense from the, from the kind of speak of the document, what we anticipate having done at the end of the year on the Kerr Avenue site. Sounds like we're going to do some infrastructure improvements at 72,000, and 61,000, and then we have 72,000 from home. Do you happen to know what, what will things look like 12 months from now after we've expended these funds?
Basically, what we did is pledge the remainder of the funds that weren't either in a grant proposal or in an existing program. And there's in addition possibility for some unallocated or carryover funds on top of those as well. So we wanted to make sure that we had significant room for that project as our next affordable housing initiative. Where we're at in terms of the timing of the project, we have a RFP out for developer review, and sent it out to maybe 100 different groups, and we'll be getting responses back next month on that. So we're hoping for some great proposals back, and then we'll have, we'll be in a better position to know what the expectation would be for city participation beyond the land that we've already purchased. So it's probably a little premature to know what the cost will be, but we definitely wanted it in there to make that progress. The other pre-commitment that we're moving ahead now is the Crystal View Town Homes, and that's something that we've pledged a total of about $200,000 on development funds. And those, too, will have a great green aspect to them as well. So stay tuned, and we will give you an update on Kerr Avenue once we get those proposals in, and hopefully we'll have some good proposals, and, you know, any housing market concerns won't be played out in this particular request.
Yeah, the second question I have, thanks, that clarifies. And the second question has to do with Ecolab, and I just saw that we have some allocation this year, and I'm unclear whether or not that's, to finish up the, this is their second house for the city that they're working on currently, is that to finish up that house, or is it for a third, are there plans for a third house? What's the status of that?
I'm going to have Danielle answer that question, so.
Just for the public's concern, we have two passive solar houses on Fairview Avenue that have been, well, one was constructed with some city support, and the second is, I think, in the process of being constructed. It looks like it's really close to finish. So I'm just curious where things stand.
The second house, I should be expecting the certificate occupancy, hopefully, I was told the end of this month, so they're just looking for a buyer. And they, we've had a couple technical assistances with them, brainstorming on other things they can do to find a buyer, because they've had several get close and then fall through. So I think for fiscal year '08-'09, they requested operating funds only because they haven't started on the third house, they didn't want to spread themselves too thin. So they're waiting to start the third house, one, to find a buyer for the second house, and two, probably to find a prospective buyer for that house, and to find an available lot. The house could go in Champaign, could go in Urbana, could go in the county, depending on if either of these entities are able to provide them a lot, or are able to provide something that is affordable enough for them to do it on their current budget.
And I think, just as a follow-up, one thing that would be useful, both with this and Crystal View as it develops, and also the Kerr Avenue, is for us to gather data on the power bills and for us to be, which I know happened with the initial Fairview house, because the consultant on Kerr brought us those numbers, but it would be great to bring that, even though it seems like it's a detail of the project, I think it relates to council goals, such that it would be great if council and the public, even more so, was made aware of. Let's look at what the energy costs are for these passive solar homes versus, and these green building designs versus a standard, you know, Tyvek stick frame vinyl siding construction that we see throughout, because an important component of the program is not only for us to build some homes, but to actually affect private development in the community, and to prove the concept that this is the way to go.
Sure, I think that is something that Ms. Klingenberg, the director of Ecolab, is very invested in, and one of the benefits of our partnership with her is access to that information that she's working on gathering and is continuing to, and I'm sure we'll have access to at some point, and I'll make sure to make that bridge.
Okay, thanks so much.
Any other questions? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Barnes.
Yes.
Bowersox.
Yes.
Chenoweth.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Smythe.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
That motion carries. Ms. Stevenson.
Resolution number 2008-04-006R, a resolution evidencing the intention of the City of Urbana-Champaign County, Illinois, to issue single-family mortgage revenue bonds and related matters. This is private bond cap allocation assist Urbana series number 2008. For the committee, I so move.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Okay, no one wants to comment, would the clerk please?
This is a resolution.
Sorry, that's a resolution. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Stevenson.
Resolution number 2008-04-007R, a resolution approving participation in Illinois housing development. Development Authority first-time home buyer, single-family programs, MCC program and MRB program series 2008 for the Committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Resolution, oops, go ahead.
Resolution in support of changing street names in Champagne County for the Committee, I so move.
I second.
Now, that was hard.
Ladies first.
Who wants to second this one? Okay. Motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Any discussion? Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, you know, it's, there's been lots of talk about, about it. I just liked the fact that we're going back to the historical name on it, I think that's appropriate. And I just got back from San Antonio, funny that Clark should mention it, and, you know, I had the pleasure of walking and running through downtown on the Riverwalk, on the San Antonio River, and, you know, really, that's a really, a very impressive bit of engineering. It's all cement at this point, you know? And they don't call it a channel, they don't call it the cement ditch, or whatever, cement way, or whatever. But, you know, it's the San Antonio River, and with the Riverwalk piece there, and it's the economic engine of their downtown. Of course, they've got it running right through downtown, and it's a significant amount of water, so, so you can do something with it. They're very proud of it. It runs through their historic district, they've got this incredible historic district right to the south of downtown, complete with a working grain elevator in the middle of it all. And, and I walked through, walked and ran through all of that, and, and they're extending this, extending their pathway. I mean, I rode, I ran down to the very end of it, and you can see their, they just stops right there, the sidewalk just stops, and you can see they're, they're keep, they're trying to continue to build southward on it, so it's been very successful. So, you know, they cleaned it up, they fixed it up a lot from what it was 20 years ago, when it was a real problem for them, and they're taking a lot of pride in it. So it'd be nice to, to be able to think of all of our bodies of water in, in positive ways in this community, so, thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carry. Thank you, Clark. Okay, reports of special committees? I don't believe we have any reports of officers? No reports of officers. New business, Urbana Business Association.
Yeah, that's fine. Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone had a chance to enjoy their day. I'll take a tip from Lynn once told me to do this short and sweet and keep them wanting more. I think that was a great tip. I, first of all, wanted to say thank you so much for having me present, and thank you so much for your continued investment of the Urbana Business Association. I'm completing my fourth month. It has been an exciting four months, and it's been fun because I've had an opportunity to work closely with very many of you that are in this room today. So a couple of things. One of the neat things about the UBA is we do a lot of different things, and one of the areas that we get actively involved in is working closely with the city. And it has been wonderful getting to know Dennis, and helping him with his vision for celebrating Urbana's 175th birthday. And it's been fun working on that committee and making some of those events happen. It has been wonderful working with Tom, and Libby, and Bill, and now with Lisa Brawls, and of course Anna, with the Public Arts, and working with her on Boneyard. I've gotten an opportunity to work closely with Bill in helping with the Philo Road beautification, and that enabled me to get to know Lynn Barnes, and also get to know the Suna Organization. It has been fun working with the parking study for downtown Urbana, Charlie, as you were talking about that earlier, and also helping to facilitate some of the other studies that are currently going on. And one thing that continues to tie in is how proactive the city is in so many of these resources. And I, it's been an exciting thing for the last four months to be actively involved with so many of these. I also get to sit on the Friday morning Streetscape Committee meeting, and if any of you have ever sit on those, that is a great opportunity for some honest dialogue and getting to hear all the things that are going on, on the city, in case I've missed it at one of the other meetings. I've had an opportunity to work with Ron O'Neil in trying to figure out what is the best way to make the City of Urbana vibrant, and bringing events into downtown Urbana, and that has been a fun thing to do in the last several months. I feel like the UBA is the ultimate bridge builder. I feel like I have an opportunity to work with many of you, and then also go forth into the community with my membership and continue to build those bridges. I'm proud to say that our membership is growing. We are up about 45% from last year, and most of our businesses are from the City of Urbana. And they value what we do in helping to get the word out, helping to provide these networking events that have been quite well attended, and many of you come to, and it's good to see your faces at the networking events that are on the second Wednesday of every month from 5 until 7. And I'm hoping all of you are getting those, those newsletters. It helps with that synergy with the businesses, with the City of Urbana, to have these bridge builders, and it helps to create that by having many of you be involved with the UBA. So if you haven't come out to one of them, I'd like to see you come to some of these events, and it would be, need to introduce you to many of our real vibrant businesses that we have in the City of Urbana. Another program we get to work with is Build Urbana. That is an awesome program, that I'll be honest. Until January, I didn't quite understand the tax rebate program, but now, if you have a question, I can answer it for you. And I've actually gone forth into the community and spoken to the Champagne County Association of Realtors, and I've asked that question, how many of you understand that program? And there's, there's a good fair response for both ends. It's a program that I think is important, I know it's ending in 2008 in December, and I have been getting some emails that I'll be forwarding to Economic Development from other Realtors in the area that talk about the importance of the program and how it has helped them bring buyers into the city and help create more rooftops to our community. We just completed our bus tour, and on May 3rd, we have a very new event that we're showcasing three neighborhoods in the City of Urbana. I actually have some flyers here that I'll leave for you. We're having some commercials that are starting on WCIA starting tomorrow, you'll see some ads in News Gazette, and we are showcasing Landis Farm, South Ridge, and Savannah Green. The City of Urbana is helping us with this event because you guys are helping us with the emergency vehicles. We're having the firehouse, we're having the Urbana Public, excuse me, Police Department come out to Savannah Green. And in the South Ridge neighborhood, we're going to have Earth Movers, and Carl Foundation Hospital has worked closely with us, and we're hoping that we'll be able to secure some more extra things for South Ridge. And in Landis Farm, we're going to have more of your vehicles, and some of the vehicles that you would see in the neighborhood. It's an event where we're hoping that we're going to showcase the neighborhoods, have open houses, but also understanding that the demographic for that neighborhood are families with children. So combine that effect where the kids can go and play on some vehicles and get to learn some of those. So I do have some flyers here, and that's part of the Build Urbana. We just completed the Boneyard Arts Festival. I was excited that with the funding, we were able to put 16 artists to work to help with that particular festival. And a lot of them were working in conjunction with the 175th Birthday Party and helping to start a brand-new tour, the Joyce, the Joseph Royer Architectural Tour that got opened at the Boneyard. I'd like to see something like that started, continued, and grown from here. That was fun to be part of that in the last several months. I'm working on another little festival, maybe you've heard of it. It's called the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival, and it is the largest festival in Champagne County, and it is truly becoming Central Illinois' cutoff to summer. Last year, we were told we'd get somewhere between 40,000 to 50,000 people that come to downtown Urbana for this two-day event. So here's my challenge. I believe that this festival is our opportunity, our opportunity to shamelessly promote ourselves. And if you got some ideas on that, because I've got some ideas, share them with me. But we have an audience, we have people that are here, we are vibrant, we are doing a lot of exciting things. Let's take that opportunity to really spotlight all the fabulous things that are happening. So I have another challenge. Congratulations, it is exciting that the arts funding was passed. So I have an idea of how maybe we can start funding it. Is anyone up for a city council dunking? It doesn't have to be a dunking.
I can volunteer some other people.
But what can we do as a?
Well, we'll joust in the middle of Broadway Avenue.
Has Lynn already, Lynn's come back, and she's willing to volunteer in the corn tent, so I'd like to see all of us to get together on that two-day event and roll up our sleeves and have some fun, shucking corn, being part of it, maybe having a pie eating contest, doing something that's creative and fun to show who we are and allow the rest of the county to get to know you all, as I have gotten to know you all. You guys are a passionate bunch, and I'm a passionate girl too, and it's been fun working together. And one thing that is really true in this community, it is a fresh new day in Urbana, and I'm happy to be part of it. So, does anyone have any questions? Hello, Lynn?
Hi, I have a comment that I also want to share. The Economic Development Corporation has invited both Susan and the Champagne Business Association person to attend the meetings. So now they are invited guests to all the EDC meetings. Susan's been attending every time since she's been invited, and so that's great. And so I think that having that attendance just further clarifies the difference in roles because they're significant, and also makes sure that we're kind of collaborating and working hand in hand. So I wanted to point that out, and I want to thank you for attending and being a part of it.
Well, thank you for making that happen, and again, that's another bridge that we get to continue to build.
Brandon?
Thank you, that sounds really good. Susan, I have one piece of feedback about the Sweet Corn Festival, which it's something we've kind of talked about the last couple of years, but it hasn't all come together and clicked, partly because it takes so much advanced planning and just kind of relationship building, which is the idea that the Sweet Corn Festival, instead of being a detriment to the downtown business owners because they have to like, close their doors, you know, the shoe store, Mirabelle, or La Gourmandaise, or all these places, they kind of, a lot of them at least close their doors on Sweet Corn Day because there's so many people, it's hard to park, it's hard for them to run their business or get their staff in and out, and they just shut down, and we're missing that opportunity, like you said, to shamelessly promote all the great stuff that's in our downtown. And one of the things that is a sort of relationship building, planning with the Sweet Corn Festival is how to convince those business owners that actually it's their opportunity to have a sidewalk sale and showcase their business when 60,000 people are right outside their door for two days. And yes, parking is different on Sweet Corn Weekend, but, you know, people manage, 60,000 people manage to get here, so, so if their businesses can be aligned, and traffic patterns, and sort of the layout can be set up, and the relationships and connections can be set up in such a way that, that we can all promote ourselves together and promote downtown, that would be a wonderful alignment. And it's been lots of years sort of in conversation, but maybe this is the year that the stars can align and we can make it happen.
Well, one thing that I'm really excited that we're able to do this year, that we've never been able to do, is actually have a full venue Friday and Saturday. And one of the reasons why we've had a partial venue on Friday, on Friday, and then a full on Saturday, is in respect to our businesses. So this year, I tried to be proactive because for the health of the festival and the flow of the festival, we really needed a full venue. So in January, I came up with a letter, and it was kind of a creative, simple, going out, introduced myself to the downtown businesses, and trying to get that buy-in that would enable me then to go to Mr. Gray and petition for a full venue. So I was prepared when he said, do you get buy-in from your downtown businesses? And one of the things that we did was put a little label, now I've slept since then, but something on a ear of, it was a bag of popcorn, and it was basically like, opportunities are popping out of this year's Urbana Sweet Corn Festival, won't you take part of it? And we had some, broke down some ideas on how they can be part of it, and we have offered all of our downtown, downtown businesses to be a vendor on us, and we would waive their fees, and they could come out and take their shots to the street. And I would actually even, were looking at rolling out the red carpet, and literally rolling out a red carpet. And, you know, it's been fun talking to heel to toe, and with advance warning, with that dialogue, and with them understanding why we are doing this, and encouraging them to come be part of this, they all were 100% in favor of having a full venue. So I hope we can take it to that next step, Brandon, and that I'm actually having all of my businesses saying, when are we going to have another 60,000 people in downtown Urbana? So I think that's a great goal, let's try to make it happen this year.
Okay, Charlie Smythe?
Hi, Charlie.
Susan, well, one of the issues that was raised last year was the, the second live stage, which got very loud, and for all of the groups on that end, they couldn't function.
Absolutely.
Especially since they were, a lot of them were, were tables, information tables and that kind of thing, and of course, that's where all the businesses are too. So, you know, if they're going to have a sidewalk sale or whatever, you couldn't carry on a conversation, even practically yelling at each other, so please give that some consideration. And Susan reminded me, I forgot to say something during the Public Arts thing, which I'll say at the very end here, I have a request for the Arts Commission, if and when it forms.
And thank you for that heads up, and we're wanting to make that, that stage on RACE. We're thinking about either moving it from RACE in Maine to actually putting it on RACE in Elm. Either way, we're making it an acoustic-only stage, and trying to be respectful to all of those, because you get this great wind tunnel effect.
Yeah.
And no matter how low you try to keep the volume, you get that wind going through, and it was blaring, I agree with you on that. No, it wasn't, it wasn't. And we're actually taking our kids and giving them that opportunity, because it was neat to have some of our local talent and opportunity to perform, and we're moving them to the main stage this year so they can really feel like rock stars. And now the main stage is on the county courthouse, thank goodness, court's not in session, so the noise should not be an issue.
Cool.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have Dennis's resolution, which is not quite completed, there's other things that need to go at the bottom there, but I sort of ran out of time, so.
Right, can I speak to it, Ben?
Yes, please.
This may be perhaps a very simple thing. It's just a conversation that I've had with one or two people, including the mayor. We are now celebrating the 175th birthday for Urbana. We've been looking at a lot of ways of tying in existing festivals and events to participate in that celebration. We had the idea that Roger Ebert is such a significant and important and beloved member of the Urbana community, having been raised in East Urbana, on, on West, on East Washington Street. And we did talk also about putting up plaques that honor individuals of historic sites or important personages in the history of Urbana. So I'm thinking that we have currently a historic person who's alive and well and with us at this time, and he's about to visit our city, so the resolution, which was proposed by me this afternoon, and refined a little bit by the mayor this evening, reads as follows, and I'll just read it. "A resolution to honor Roger Ebert and commemorate his boyhood home in Urbana. Whereas Roger Ebert is a native of Urbana, worked as reporter for the University of Illinois Daily Illini and the Champagne-Urbana News Gazette, and is nationally known as a film critic for, for the Chicago Sun-Times. And whereas Roger Ebert received the first Pulitzer Prize awarded in journalism for Film Review in 1975, and is founder of Ebert Fest, the Roger Ebert's Overlook Film Festival, which started 10 years ago, 1997. And whereas Roger Ebert has generously given of his time to help raise funds for the Urbana Free Library, where he spent many hours of his youth. And whereas the City of Urbana would like to give Roger Ebert a thumbs up and officially recognize him and his contributions to Urbana and to the appreciation of high-quality work in film. Whereas the commemoration of Roger Ebert's Boyhood Home in Urbana at 410 East Washington Street would be a fitting recognition of his roots and his achievements. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Urbana, Illinois, that a suitable plaque be designed and installed to recognize the achievements of Roger Ebert and to commemorate his boyhood home in Urbana." So that's the resolution that I'd like to put before you, and apparently from the information we have is that we would take information we have, is that we would take a three-fifths of the majority to pass it this afternoon, but I would wish that you would consider so.
Okay, motion by Dennis Roberts, seconded by Charlie Smythe.
My question.
A question for Mr. Smythe.
Will the plaque have a thumbs up on it?
I think it's to be designed.
Yeah, it might be something that the Public Arts Commission would like to do, because part of the ordinance is commemoration of historic things.
The only, yeah, well, yeah, you know, the other thing is, they've dropped the word overlooked from the Film Festival, I don't know whether, you know, it was founded as the Overlook Film Festival, but.
That is correct.
So I'm not sure whether, which wording you want in there, but.
I included that, the Overlook Film Festival, as a historic comment, prefacing it by Ebert Fest, which is the current name.
Anyone else? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Must have been two-thirds. Motion carries. Mr. Smythe.
Earlier, I meant to make a request, I have a project request of the Arts Commission, when it gets formed, before I forget. Earlier this week, or last week, we had a, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee met, a number of occasions have come here to the city building, and there's not enough bicycle parking out front here, we have just this one little dinky thing. Could we get the Arts Commission to do us a new bike rack here that could hold a few more bikes, please?
I'm sure they'll be willing to consider many things. Okay, is there anything else? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.